Good evening, everyone. I'm Deborah Lockwood, Chair of the Washington County Planning Commission. Today is January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, and this evening's meeting is called to order. May we have the roll call, please? Yes, Commissioner Frye.
Present.
Commissioner Montu Blanco. Commissioner Rosenberg. And is not with us at the moment. Commissioner Whips.
Present.
Line. Commissioner Will.
Present.
Commissioner Maury Badoo.
Present.
And Chair Lockwood.
Present.
Thank you. We do have, sorry, six Commissioners present.
Thank you.
Thanks. May we have the Director's Report, please?
Yes, you may. Thank you, Chair Lockwood. My name is Erin Wardell. I'm the Assistant Director of the Department of Land Use and Transportation, and I have this evening's Director's Report. Happy twenty twenty-five. Welcome to our first Planning Commission meeting of the year. I'm going to start out by talking about some of the changes we have coming up for our Planning Commission and some of the other people in this room. So we just held a recognition event for Chair Deborah Lockwood, who is term limited, and so this will be her last meeting of the Planning Commission. We appreciate Chair Lockwood's service to our Planning Commission. We learned late last week that Planning Commission member Joe Kaiser is also going to be resigning his seat due to other personal commitments. We appreciate Joe's service to our Planning Commission as well. We learned yesterday that our County Council Representative, Rob Bovet, will be taking a position at Lane County as their County Council. And so Rob will be with the county for another month and then moving on to Lane County. We really appreciate Rob's expert legal support for our Planning Commission, and he will be missed going into the future. And then finally, this is my last meeting as the Director for the purposes of the Planning Commission, due to stepping into my new role and hiring our new Planning and Development Services Manager. So for your next Planning Commission meeting, Carol will be taking over with the delegated authority of the Director for these meetings. So change is hard sometimes, but change is also sometimes really good. And so we have two new Planning Commissioners who we expect to be appointed at the Board's meeting on January twenty-first. The Board held a work session back in December, and it sounded like they were planning on appointing Nina Carlson for District Three and James Just from District Four. We're pretty excited about both of these candidates. They actually both live in the rural area, and with Chair Lockwood leaving the Planning Commission, we didn't have any other Planning Commissioners who live outside the urban growth boundary. And so really looking forward to the perspectives that they will bring to our Planning Commission. So if all goes according to plan, the Board will appoint them at their January twenty-first meeting, and the first meeting that they would join would then be on February fifth. As a part of the new appointments and having that conversation, the Board always asks us to report out on the attendance of our Planning Commissioners over the previous year. And so just for your awareness, that was reported out to the Board. Another big change, now that we've mentioned the Board, Commissioner Roy Rogers finished forty years on the Board of Commissioners. He began his service on the Board in nineteen eighty-five, and so he is, his service to the county, of course, can't be matched by anybody else in the state of Oregon, longest-serving County Commissioner in the entire state. That's a really tough record to beat, and Roy was on the Board for the adoption of many of our original planning documents and was a part of many of the key initiatives and things that land use and transportation, as a department does today, as well as many, many other things that the county does. And so really appreciate his service. Our newly-elected District Three County Commissioner is Jason Snyder. He was sworn in on January seventh. Previously, Commissioner Snyder was the Mayor of the City of Tiger, so brings really good experience and a lot of perspective to our Board of Commissioners. I want to talk a little bit about upcoming work, or rather, work that will not be upcoming. As your Planning Commission is aware, the Governor of Oregon had been granted a temporary authority to make an urban growth boundary expansion for the purpose of semiconductor facility development. We had been given notice, and a public meeting was held to consider bringing in three hundred and seventy-three acres adjacent to the city of Hillsborough. Over the December holidays, the Governor decided not to exercise that authority. So had she made that decision to expand the urban growth boundary, your Planning Commission would have seen an ordinance to process that decision through our planning processes. That's some work that would have been ahead of you in the next few months, because we would have had to do it within six months. So that is no longer an ordinance that will be on your plate. You will notice on your agenda tonight that you had had a scheduled work session on the North Plains Urban Growth Boundary Expansion Re-look. North Plains has a new mayor and a new City Council, and as they have just held their first meeting together, they need a little bit of time to come together as a City Council and decide what their next steps are and their direction for city staff. And so we decided to postpone that work session until they have a better understanding of what their work ahead looks like. So we expect to bring that back possibly at some point in the future, but tonight was just a little bit too soon for them. So for today's meeting, you will have a work session on Urban Growth Boundaries and Metro's Twenty Twenty-four Urban Growth Management Decision. For your either February fifth or nineteenth meetings, you will need to hold an election for your Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair. We could have a discussion of future work session topics that are of interest to the Planning Commission, and then we are thinking about maybe a Transportation System Plan one-on-one topic as an idea for you to consider. That hasn't formally been decided upon yet. So we are looking for other topics we may want to bring forward in the near future while we wait for some of our other meatier topics to come a little bit later in twenty twenty-five. And that concludes my somewhat long Director's Report this evening. Thank you.
Are there any questions? All right, then we'll move on. Public communication is the next item. Has anyone signed up to talk to us tonight? We did have one individual sign up to speak online, but we don't have anyone in the virtual audience. That person isn't present right now. Okay, so we'll move on then to our work session on the Urban Growth Boundaries and Metro's Twenty Twenty-four Urban Growth Management Decision.
Thank you, Chair Lockwood and Commissioners. Todd Barkwitz is going to give that presentation.
So good evening, Chair Lockwood and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Todd Barkwitz, Senior Planner and Community Planning with the Department of Land Transportation. Tonight I'll be presenting on the Urban Growth Boundaries and Metro's Twenty-four Urban Growth Boundary Decision. The emergence of Urban Growth Boundaries, or UGBs, in Oregon dates back to the early nineteen seventies. Nineteen seventy-three, Oregon Governor Tom McCall mandated UGBs for all cities in Oregon as part of SB one hundred, the bill that implemented Oregon's renowned land use planning system. In addition to UGBs, this bill created an institutional structure for statewide planning, including the first statewide planning goals as central principles to this program. All two hundred and forty-one incorporated cities in Oregon have a UGB or are within a regional UGB, including twenty-four cities that are part of the Portland Regional UGB. And here's a map showing the UGB areas in the state. Note the focus on the Willamette Valley between Eugene and Portland, where rapid urban development and increasing disappearance of farms, forests, and scenic resources were significant concerns in the nineteen sixties. The large blue splotch near Portland is the Portland Region's UGB, which extends across three counties, including Washington County. The regional UGB was established in nineteen seventy-nine. It included over two hundred and twenty-seven thousand acres. Over time, it was expanded over three dozen times. It is now about two hundred and sixty-one thousand acres. So, you know, about a twenty-four thousand acre increase, mostly since nineteen ninety-eight. And so at the most basic level, an urban growth boundary, it's a line drawn on planning maps to designate which areas are urban and which are rural. Area inside the, inside the UGB can be used for urban development, and area outside must be preserved in its natural state or be primarily used for agriculture or forestry. UGB expansion is only allowed under certain circumstances. In an Oregon, a UGB supports statewide planning goals through protecting farms and forests from sprawl and promoting the efficient use of land, public facilities, and services inside the UGB. All UGB expansion, whether for the Metro UGB or City UGB, is guided by statewide planning goal fourteen, which aims to provide for an orderly and efficient transition from rural to urban use to accommodate urban population and urban employment. So the Portland Region's UGB is managed by Metro. Cities within Metro can propose UGB expansion to Metro or in areas outside it, but adjacent to the Metro UGB, where expansions can generally occur called urban reserve areas. Cities outside of Metro, including cities like Banks, Gaston, and North Plains in Washington County, have their own UGB. They can consider adjacent land for UGB expansion so long it is not designated as rural reserve. And here's another map showing urban and rural reserves in Washington County. All rural lands have either an urban reserve, rural reserve, or undesignated area designation. These designations in Washington County were finalized in the current form in twenty fourteen and provide added predictability of future development. Urban reserves are land suitable for accommodating urban development over the fifty years after their designation, and rural reserves will be protected from urbanization for fifty years after their designation.
Can you go back and just kind of point out a few areas for?
Yeah, I have a pointer on here.
Is it not?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna talk more about the different areas in a future slide. We'll bring up this map again. So Metro and cities over ten thousand outside of Metro are required to periodically compare land need with protected twenty-year land supply for jobs and housing. Cities under ten thousand, including the three cities in Washington County with their own UGBs, are only encouraged to do this comparison, but must follow state processes for UGB expansion if they opt to expand. For all UGB expansions, goal fourteen requires local governments to consider four boundary location factors, and they are bulleted here when evaluating alternative UGB expansion locations to determine areas with the highest prioritization for UGB inclusion. In general, locations that are most amenable to urban development and less suitable for farming and forestry are considered highest priority for inclusion. The state prescribed process for performing this analysis is defined in Oregon revised statutes one ninety-seven and one ninety-seven A. So here is that map again. And included in this map are areas in Washington County where UGB expansion has recently occurred or has been discussed, including the two Metro UGB expansions at the bottom. So Tiger River Terrace two point O was a Metro UGB expansion encompassing over five hundred acres. It was approved by Metro in January twenty twenty-three. And then the nearly thirteen hundred acre Sherwood West Metro UGB expansion was approved by Metro in December twenty twenty-four. Neither expansion required county adoption of an ordinance approving the new UGB, the new Metro UGB prior to being considered for acknowledgement by the state. And then at the very top is North Plains. It's outside of Metro and therefore is governed by the state process. However, because there are adopted metro reserves surrounding it, North Plains, UGB expansion is subject to some metro regulations. North Plains UGB expansion must first be approved by North Plains, then, as you may recall, per state rules, the same UGB alignment must be approved by the Washington County, by Washington County prior to it being considered for acknowledgement by the state. And as you may recall, Washington County Board, the Washington County Board rejected the ordinance, ordinance eight ninety-nine that we had brought previously before the Planning Commission, and that was for North Plains UGB expansion. It was rejected in July twenty twenty-four after North Plains voters overwhelmingly rejected the city's UGB expansion ordinance last May. So North Plains, this is commenced a UGB expansion re-look process, but UGB expansion in the city is still to be determined at airs, as Erin had mentioned earlier. So also on this map, just to the south of, south and east of the North Plains urban, well, the North Plains area there is the seven hundred and seventy-three acre area formerly considered by Governor Kotek for the Metro UGB expansion as part of SP four. And again, the Governor opted to no longer pursue this UGB expansion in, in December. And Teresa, was there anything else that you wanted to point out on here? I guess I should point out actually that we do have urban reserves on there. They are shown in blue. Rural Reserve, which is actually most of the county, is, is in green, kind of yellowish-green. And we do have undesigned areas in brown. Note that those are, there's undesigned areas completely surrounding North Plains and, and I believe most, at least of Banks. So, yeah, those undesigned areas of North Plains and Banks do want to expand the UGB are the areas that they're able to do so. And so here's more details on those proposals. Again, note that Metro UGB expansions were all in formerly designated urban reserve areas that North Plains and the cities of Banks and Gaston would occur in undesigned areas and that the SP four-related UGB expansion that had, that was proposed was designated for a rural reserve area that occurred only per, that, that would have become urban only per the Governor's order. And so most UGB expansions today are probably primarily focused on housing due to the state's housing crisis. And so we're going to focus a little bit more just on the Metro UGB from, from here on out in twenty twenty-four. Metro was required by law, as it is every six years, to complete the assessment on whether there is enough land inside the UGB for twenty years of growth, process known as Urban Growth Management. So this process was informed by residents, elected leaders, community groups, and others. The agency was tasked with planning for future population growth to meet future needs for housing, jobs, transportation, and recreation. So as part of this, Metro considers trends and a variety of factors from changes in population growth, household size, and community desires. If UGB expansion is deemed necessary to help meet future needs, Metro considers that land is available and most ready for development. Then assessments are, are published in Urban Growth Report. Yes, please.
Um, could you describe what land readiness means? A second to last item on the previous slide.
Yeah, so land readiness, basically, land, let's see, that is prepared for development, that has, seems to have willing landowners who, who might be willing to develop.
It doesn't necessarily mean that facilities are there, roads are?
So I'll discuss more about this when I get into Sherwood West, but typically, infrastructure plan is part of the concept proposal that goes into the UGB expansion and that, that kind of helps inform development readiness.
Thank you.
If I could add a little bit to that, there's a lot of history in how Metro has done urban growth boundary expansions, going back to nineteen seventy-nine when they adopted the very first urban growth boundary. The way those decisions were made sometimes in the past didn't take into consideration how ready land was to develop, and that sometimes has created challenges with the ability of that land to be brought in and then actually built up to provide the needed housing that was the basis for making that decision to expand the urban growth boundary. So specifically, we can look at an area like North Cooper Mountain that was brought into the urban growth boundary a little bit over twenty years ago, I think, May two thousand and two, is that right? That area was already somewhat developed. It has a hard time accessing utilities. Utilities need to come from Beaverton to the south through the middle Cooper area that just came into the urban growth boundary in twenty eighteen. So it, it hasn't really been able to develop up to what we would have expected it to. So now it sits within the urban growth boundary, but it's certainly not being built up to an urban character yet. So for the twenty eighteen decision, and actually, I think going back to twenty fifteen, Metro started requiring concept plans from the cities that proved that they could actually develop these areas and they could provide the housing that they asserted that they needed and that they had infrastructure plans, as Todd said, and some of those other pieces of information ready to go, so that there was some certainty that when the urban growth boundary is expanded, we can expect to see housing and businesses and whatever else we want that area to develop to in a relatively short order. So just a little bit more history of how we got there with land readiness.
Thank you.
So, yeah, let's see. Looking for where I was. I'm sorry. I guess I was. Sorry. Here we go. Metro and its regional partners perform various technical work and analysis to inform the Urban Growth Management Decision. These, these determine the availability and capacity of land inside the UGB, projected needed housing based on population forecasts, and protected needed jobs and needed employment and housing types based on quantitative and qualitative data. Metro also reviews letters of interest and UGB, and UGB expansion proposals from cities in the region seeking to expand the UGB. And then the agency performs extensive engagement from technical and policy committees to regional jurisdictions or jurisdictions in the region and to a spectrum of community interest groups. And so this, this is a multi-year process for urban growth management. It culminates in recommendations from staff and advisory groups, public hearings, and ultimately a decision by Metro Council. So Metro's Twenty Twenty-four analysis estimates three hundred and fifteen thousand more people in the Portland region over the next twenty years for a total population of just over two point nine million by the year twenty twenty-four. That's analysis of housing trends, determine that a middle baseline growth scenario would be the most likely housing mix scenario to occur in the future, and the capacity for thirty-one hundred units of middle housing and single-unit detached housing would be needed to meet the future regional need. So Metro also used a baseline employment forecast and anticipates an additional eighty-two thousand new jobs within the Metro UGB by twenty forty-four for a total of one point oh eight million jobs. So this analysis was translated to an estimated land need. So land is needed to efficiently accommodate at least thirty-one hundred additional homes in the regional UGB by twenty twenty, by twenty forty-four. Metro's analysis of employment lands determine that the region's surplus of industrial land supply inside the UGB, this is mostly of smaller parcels that cannot easily be aggregated into larger parcels and that there's a need for parcels with relatively flat slopes and proximity to transportation that could be combined into fifty-plus acre industrial sites. These larger sites are needed to accommodate the region's high-tech manufacturing growth, and that's sought after. Its analysis also determined that approximately three hundred and twenty buildable acres are needed to support the region's expected commercial job growth of eighty-two thousand five hundred new jobs over the next twenty years. Sherwood submitted the only letter of interest in UGB expansion proposal for the, for Metro's Twenty Twenty-four Urban Growth Management Psycho. The proposal included a mix of housing and employment uses on one thousand two hundred and ninety-one acres in the Sherwood West Urban Reserve area that's west of the city's boundary. It had a strategy for protecting habitat and open space areas in the UGB expansion area. It had an infrastructure funding strategy for transportation, utilities, and parks. And it is, it constantly planned for between three, three thousand and five and a half thousand, I'm sorry, between three thousand and five thousand five hundred and eighty-two homes to meet the regional housing need for twenty forty-four. Lastly, there were two fifty-plus acre industrial sites that were identified. So Metro's growth, growth options included taking measures to increase the likelihood of housing development on land already inside the UGB, possibly combined with a modest UGB expansion, or they could conditionally expand the UGB to meet the region's housing need and protect large industrial sites. Metro chose the latter. On December fifth of last year, just over a month ago, Metro approved a conditional UGB expansion for Sherwood West, the Sherwood West Urban Reserve area to accommodate the housing and employment needs for the next twenty years. Conditions for the UGB expansion area, many of which are listed here, include developing new strategies and incentives for the production of affordable housing, exploring opportunities for regulated affordable housing in certain areas, establishing those two fifty-plus acre industrial sites, updating the inventory of fish and wildlife habitat, and then completing comprehensive planning in four years that achieves an average density in residential areas of at least nine point two units per acre. Here's the plan. Includes a mixed use, some mixed employment in the north, some mixed use and a commercial as well as some lower and middle densities that kind of, that are adjacent to the habitat that kind of cross diagonally through the site. And those industrial areas that we talked about, the fifty-plus area, fifty-plus acre areas would be located in the north. And here's the broader regional context. All the expansion fits into the broad, broader, broader region. It's in green. And while steps for constant planning and UGB expansion approval for Sherwood West are complete, there are still tasks ahead. And those have to be done before urban development and the urban growth boundary expansion area can occur, and those include comprehensive planning and zoning by Sherwood. And while Metro approved the Sherwood West UGB expansion, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, or DLCD, received multiple objections to the expansion prior to the January ninth deadline that occurred just a few days ago for submitting objections. The DLC's director has until April eighteenth to take action on the UGB expansion, which would, and they would either issue a decision to approve, remand, or further matter to the Land Conservation and Development Commission, or LCDC. If a DLCD Director decision is issued, it is appealable to LCDC. If the matter is referred, LCDC would hold a hearing and issue a decision, and LCTC decision, either on appeal or on referral, is appealable to the Court of Appeals. There were a lot of words in that. Technically, at DLC, they're anticipating that whether through the Director referral or an appeal to the Director's decision, that the matter would come before the LCDC at their June meeting. Therefore, the county will not be filing an ordinance to transfer Sherwood West UGB expansion area to the urban area and apply the urban FD twenty line use designation to the area as we typically do until all appeals to the UGB expansion decision are exhausted. So once filed, the ordinance will, it'll be noticed and it'll go through the typical legislative process that our ordinances do, including at least one hearing before the Washington County Planning Commission. Concurrently, Sherwood will perform additional analysis and undertake comprehensive planning before the UGB expansion becomes eligible for annexation and development can occur. And urban development can occur. That concludes our presentation. We're happy to take questions.
I'll just make a comment that I found it really interesting to just be able to walk through a different process from what we were experiencing with North Plains. But do Commissioners have questions or comments? Yes.
Thanks, Chair Lockwood. Did I hear you correctly say that the rural reserves are in place for fifty years after they're originally approved?
They are, yes.
Okay.
They cannot be considered for UGB expansion.
About what year were they approved?
So the, the latest rural reserves in Washington County would have been twenty fourteen. Is it twenty, would it go back to that or would it go back to twenty eleven?
It would go to fourteen.
Okay.
Or twenty eleven, maybe, but I think.
Are there any that are coming up for review and will be expired soon?
No, they'd all go back to fourteen. Okay, yeah, in Washington County. I don't know about other places.
And there, there is state legislation that allows, if you recall, those undesigned areas. So once development of the urban reserves gets to a certain level, and I'm thinking seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent, and I actually have the current statistic. I just pulled it up.
Ah, okay. So once it gets to that point, then we could consider the undesigned areas, but not the rural reserves. Thank you.
And that's for the Metro UGB, and so for City UGB.
County.
For City UGBs, they, that's the only land, undesigned land is the only land that they sometimes have to. For city UGBs, they, that's the only land, undesigned land is the only land that they sometimes have to grow into. And so they, they have to go through that, that analysis, and that analysis includes locating first having, proposing UGB expansion on existing urban reserves. If there are no existing urban reserves, then it goes down to the next tier and they can consider undesigned land if they have any.
It's very confusing and it's very specific to where you sit in the state of Oregon and whether you are in an MPO with a combined urban growth boundary like Metro. And then we ended up with this very unusual situation where the state legislature actually had to step in in 2014 and adopt House Bill 4078 that set the urban and rural reserves only for Washington County, only for the metro urban growth boundary. So we're operating under just our own playbook here. If you were on the planning commission for city of Medford, you would be playing by a different set of rules because they have their own thing going on. Regarding that 75% statistic from Teresa. So once 75% of those original urban reserves have been added to the urban growth boundary, we can start considering the undesigned areas. With the Sherwood West addition, we are at just over 40%. So we have a ways to go before we'd be at 75% of the urban reserves. We've had staff look at the numbers and look at the maps before. It's impossible to get to that 75% number until parts of Stafford are brought into the urban growth boundary. And if you're at all familiar with the politics down in that part of the county and specifically around the Stafford area, I think that's a pretty big conversation before that's going to happen. So I think it's a ways out. I think it's probably more likely the rules will change before we get to that 75%. But that's just my prediction as of today, and I have been wrong before. So we'll see what happens.
If I could.
Sure.
Because it just reminded me, on Monday, our 2025 Oregon session started. And they start that off by introducing pre-session filed bills. There's over 2,000.
Chair Lockwood, could we get Mr. Rovett to get a microphone?
There's over 2,000 pre-session filed bills that got released on Monday, and they will continue to grow and will probably get closer to 4,000 by the end of session. But I've taken a brief skim, believe it or not, across those bills. I haven't read them yet. But I think there's at least a dozen that attempt to do something with UGB law. No surprise. So this is a big point of focus for not just local governments, but state legislature as well. So now, most bills actually die percentage-wise, but I, yeah, I just couldn't help be struck by how many UGB bills that have been introduced already this legislative session, and we're only a week in.
Well, I can kind of piggyback on that because as I was reading through the material for today, the difference, I think the big difference between what's described here and what we encountered with the North Plains was that this process requires a concept. You have to be able to say pretty exactly what you're going to do with the land, and North Plains was not really required to do that. So it's possible that some of those bills introduced are asking for these smaller areas to have a concept. I don't know.
I, I think we, I just want to back up a little bit though on the North Plains situation, just because it's a different decision-making body, right? Metro council is making the decision when it's a metro expansion. So North Plains City Council, I if we were talking to the previous city council, I think would say that they, they did have some of that planning work done by their staff. It just wasn't the same type of concept plan that Metro requires.
Yeah, I just remember there's an experience where we didn't really know a lot about what was going to happen to the wired land.
And I think that the other thing that's challenging is that in that situation, in the North Plains situation, the county board of commissioners is a part of the decision-making process because they have to be the second decider. Whereas with Metro, Metro's the decider. The cities actually don't get to decide anything. They make the proposal and then they wait to see what happens. It ends with Metro. The county's FD20 application ordinance is required by our plans, but it's not really required for that development to move forward. So it's really pretty fascinating the way that we have things done here in Washington County.
But it's based on the state law, right?
And two different paths.
Right. Yes.
Commissioner Monte Blanco. This is really interesting. I feel like every local electorate should have this presentation and something like that. I'm curious, you know, this is some of those wonkiest stuff that's happening in Oregon. How do we talk to Washington County residents about this? How do they learn about it? How do they navigate it? Who's like genuinely, whose responsibility is it to make sure people understand this? Like I, I mean, I've lived in, I lived in unincorporated for most of my life and now I'm in Beaverton and it is confusing. And it directly impacts so many lives. I'm just, it's mostly a big picture question of who's, whose job is that?
That's a great question. I mean, I would say a lot of it does end up being Metro on, on the metro urban growth boundary. And they did do some level of, of public outreach and involvement. But I'm not sure that that reached the general public versus just the people who are particularly interested in, in this topic and know, you know, know to get in touch with Metro and get on the lists and such. But it is a pretty long process. I think it takes them about a year and a half to do the, the urban growth report. And they're working with local jurisdictions. There are hearings. But it's not a, it is kind of a wonky thing that sometimes it's hard to get the general public interested in, in some of these things.
Yes. People are busy and there's no shortage of things happening in their community. And that's just on my mind. And I think about the significant natural resource work and how wonky that was and.
So moving forward on Sherwood West, there were those conditions that I mentioned that Metro put on Sherwood West for their UGB expansion to occur. Some of it did have to do with public engagement. Specifically, there was talk about involving, actively involving the tribes, tribes that were associated with, with, with that land in the decision-making process. And I believe that's something that our Oregon Housing Needs Analysis work also requires now. But that's like one avenue for, for Metro. Again, we don't, given that the county's not really involved in the metro urban growth boundary decisions, we don't have much say there. But for the local decisions where the county does have to pass an ordinance, I believe we actually did notice of a little bit broader of an area than normal for the, when North Plains, when we were noticing the North Plains ordinance last year.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? I'll, I'll just say I do understand that probably the bills that are being introduced are more about loosening requirements rather than making them tighter. I do understand that. If, if there aren't any more comments or questions, maybe we're finished with this part of our agenda. I'm not seeing any. Okay, let's go on. Next is consideration of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. One is from November 20th, 2024. Are there any corrections for those minutes? Seeing any. So without objection, the minutes for November 20th, 2024 are accepted as submitted. The other minutes are for December 4th, 2024. Any corrections there? Not seeing any. So without objection, the minutes for December 4th, 2024 are accepted as submitted. Next item is planning commission announcements. Does any commissioner have an announcement tonight? Vice Chair Maury B. Do.
I, thanks, Chair Lockwood. I just want to say thank you for all of your leadership over the entire time I've been on the planning commission. It has been a privilege to work with you and wish, wish you luck in your future endeavors.
Okay, thank you so very much. Appreciate that. It's been a great privilege to serve on the commission and to serve as chair. And as I said in our gathering beforehand, I really appreciate all of the dedication of my fellow commissioners and their courtesy. So that's, it's been very special and I, it meant a lot to me. So thank you all. And with that, we are adjourned. Night, everybody.